I don't remember this started so long ago. Were you asked by the school committee some years ago to fundraise to a particular number? And I'm not talking about the, like, the CPAC money or the other, just for you guys, boosters going out to raise additional funds.
I'll let Stephanie answer that.
Yeah, so we were asked by January of, good lord, we're in 24, January of 2023, to have raised, it was a weird number, it was like 331,000. It was like this really odd number, which we met. And that led to some other discussion, I think, in March of 23. But other than that, there's never been a number asked of us. We've always kind of gone on the assumption, I personally, when I was meeting with large businesses and donors, came up with, okay, this is what they told me in 2017, if you do the rate of inflation, and Tillman probably can do the math faster than I can, but in general, we kind of said, okay, it is not 5 million, it's 5 and 1/2 million, with another 500 grand that needs to be set aside for maintenance. And then started looking at that as sort of take out the CPAC, take out town funds, et cetera, and then that's what needed to be raised. But I was always helping it, the accountant and me requires it.
I just want to say thank you for all of the work that you've done, not just on this project, but the support for all of athletics. Both my kids play a lot of sports, and it's fantastic to see, you know, people supporting them like that, because they are some of the kids that, like, those are their people. And that's where they found their people, and that's where they will forever find their people. So just thank you so much for the work that you've been doing. Jennifer?
So you said that you had around $243,040 cash in hand, which is super impressive for a year's worth of fundraising, that's amazing. And then you have like another 106,000 roughly committed? What does, what does that mean?
One $50,000 commitment, we just don't have the cash in hand. Like, there's not a check that's been in, but they are committed, meaning that the agreement is there. Does that make sense?
Like a signed agreement?
Yes. Does that make sense?
It does.
Okay, good. And then another one is, it's public, Bank ESP, sorry, I had to think through whether I can talk names, and they did a $25,000 with a matching $25,000. So we, as Mary alluded to, we had come up with this elaborate considered fundraiser where we were going to give away nameplates on the stands for everybody who gave 100 bucks and get up to 25,000 in order to get matched with Bank ESP, that would be another 50,000. So Bank ESP has a commitment, they've even done their press release and all that other stuff, but I can't consider that money in hand.
So Bank ESP is, they're gonna, they are gonna give 25,000, and then they'll give an, no, they're gonna, they'll give 25,000 if we raised, if you, we raised 25,000.
Correct.
And your plan for doing that is the nameplates on, on stands?
That's where it was last time we talked about it, but then we were gonna execute it, and then again, all this stuff sort of happened, and we put it on pause. But yeah, we had one fundraiser there that made a couple of grand and released our new video. If you haven't seen the video, you should check it out, it's very cool.
So I would also like to thank you for all of the work that you've done. I think, you know, it's, I understand how much work fundraising is. It's really my least favorite thing to do, so thank you. My understanding, and I don't want to rain on your parade at all, but my understanding is that stands are not in the design at all yet, or there's no plan to put stands in, so it's hard to put nameplates on air.
Sure.
But, so hopefully you have a better, another idea, or can fundraise for the stands, too.
So, so that's just one of many, but one of the events we were hoping to plan for was during the holidays, but in, so there's a lot of, I won't, I don't have to remind anybody, but we didn't have a school, a functioning school committee meeting for a period of time. We had a golf tournament that we had to plan and finish for, but there's, their, Bank ESP is willing to work with us to actually host and pay for and have an event. What Stephanie's talking about for the nameplates is one thing, but there's gonna be an actual event. That's like one idea she's sharing, as far as some of the things that we've come up with, okay?
Excellent. So my overall concern about this whole project is that, at the end of the day, we're gonna get to an estimate, and the estimate is gonna be astronomical, and we're not gonna be able to afford it. And then we're gonna have to go all the way back to the drawing board to create a different proposal that we can afford. And then we aren't gonna have the money that is earmarked for a turf field, because we won't be able to afford it. And then it'll take another two years to redo everything, and we won't have a track at all. And that's what I really want to prevent. I really want a track, I really want a field, and I really want to have it as soon as possible. And I don't want to have obstacles to that happening. And so what, I don't know what the best solution is to make that happen without a hitch, given all of the town constraints and the need to coordinate between four different towns to make sure that the funding is in place for, from different aspects, and to not lose any money that we've already raised. But given, I know, I know you're aware of Graylock and the issues that they've encountered with their track and field, and they had to go completely back to the drawing board and redo all of their plans, and they jettisoned the idea of going to turf because they just couldn't afford it. Because the proposal came back like double or triple the amount that they expected. So I would like to work with the boosters to try to figure out how we can move this forward without losing money, but ensuring that the project can move forward even if costs escalate dramatically. I don't know how to do that.
Well, the one thing I would say, and will probably know more as SRL, SLR, whatever the name of the company is, thank you, goes forward, but the one thing I do know, after talking to several people and then watching my daughter play soccer on that godforsaken field, the one option you can't do is option one. If you leave it in an east-west orientation, the maintenance on it will sink the town, just because of the way the drainage is. So you have to rotate it north-south. There's no other way to do it. Otherwise, you could put new track down, but it's going to fall apart. So, I mean, I get what you're saying, and I definitely think we should work about it, but grass only works if you maintain it and you actually create drainage. And we haven't successfully done it anywhere in this town.
And just want to put one other point. A turf field can generate money, a grass field cannot.
So to that point, do you think that the turf field can generate enough money to replace it in eight years?
Absolutely. I can name you lacrosse teams and soccer teams that will pay $500 an hour to have access to a turf field.
I haven't done the math, I don't know.
And it's year-round. Think through that, like, if you have a team, 10 teams at 500 bucks an hour per week, you're gonna be able to generate enough money to maintain and replace. And we also then also have access to every single state and regional meets where we can charge funds. It is a revenue maker. Ask Holyoke. Ask West Springfield. Ask anybody with a turf field how much money they make.
So I'm gonna channel Levered in my question. Since the project started in 2018, and now six years have passed, and I think we have learned, mankind has learned more about health concerns related to artificial turf. And I guess my question is, in light of those observations, is there any consideration that may be going for an artificial turf field, even with the potential economic benefits, even though we don't have a limited schedule for our athletes, that this might not be the right thing? And 10, 20 years from now, when we have suffering young adults who, you know, were exposed to something that we didn't know about now, we may regret it?
Point of order. Sorry. I think that's a really important question and thing to think about, but I think we're veering away from the boosters giving us a fundraising update. And it's not, it's not for the boosters to tell us what, what decision we should make or to advise us on the health risks. I think that's a decision that we have to make, and I, I believe these, that we have them here, to give us a fundraising update, and I feel like we're veering away from that.
I retract my question.
So, so part of the work that SLR will do is to inform us around those topics a little bit, because they're, you know, they're updated on manufacturing techniques and, and different options, because there's lots of them. I think when I, you know, when we got presentations from them, I think they talked about at least 20 different infill options that exist now. Some of them don't work in New England, I mean.
Well, and I would say, if you came to an Amherstown meeting not too long ago, I showed them an option, which is all sand and corkanut, which is coconut and cork, and it's extremely safe. So I, I think to Doug's point, there are plenty of options that I'm sure SLR will present.
And UMass and Amherst, they just put their fields in, and they would be wonder, hopefully wonderful resources as town partners.
Thank you. Are there any other, Bridgette?
Sure. So, well, I think like everyone, I want to thank you for the work you've done, not only here, but I know you both have been so committed to athletics and our young people during the pandemic and probably before, so thanks for that. I was invited to a fundraiser recently for the art department, and it just said it was for the track. And so I wondered if, when you're fundraising for that, if you're separating that money out, because I know that there probably, I do know many people personally, myself, who would love to donate to the track, but wouldn't donate particularly for artificial turf, given the legislation that's coming down the pike and all the risks that have come up.
And that's actually what we'll have to do, thank you, Bridgette, that's what we'll have to do when, if, when we're not gonna be fundraising anymore, if it's gonna switch from the artificial turf, because again, that was what we told the donors, and I'm sure many of them will continue to donate, like, for instance, Camille, that was probably Camille's fundraiser, wonderful. In fact, regardless of the surface, I think it would be nice to have a plaque to show, like, her artwork or something, because she really took this on by herself and produced fantastic art and is donating it. So again, the fundraisers that we're doing, it's very clear to the donors that it's based on the project that we, we did a lot of background research. We didn't just choose a project because arbitrarily, there was a lot, many hours of thought into this, including health considerations.
And maybe if I can just clarify, were you asking if somebody wanted to donate, but only for a grass turf, would we take that donation and put it in a separate account?
Yeah, or when you're advertising a fundraiser, I mean, I only saw the advertising, I wasn't able to come, but like, I think that, like, if I did come, I'd be totally willing to donate to the track, but there are many people would be willing to donate to the track, but not to the turf, because of all the risks involved potentially with that.
And I think to Mary's point at the very beginning, it's, we committed to a specific path, because that was what we were told is the best way to fundraise. And to offer people two different options doesn't tend to allow you to fundraise in the best way. So I don't think we would be inclined to do that, but whatever the regional school committee decides to do going forward, if the boosters can be helpful in doing that, we will do that.
Can I ask you a question? Have you received any, like, donations in kind?
No.
No? Okay.
We've, we've made asks, but we did not receive it.
Okay, so just a follow-up to it, if you were to receive donation in kind, then do you, does that count in your fundraising dollar figure as the act, the value of the work that is being done, or the cost, like, what it would cost the work to happen? Do you know what I mean?
So, I'll answer you, I don't know this is gonna be the, what you're looking for, but we haven't calculated, like, the cost of the person who provided his free services to produce the video. We haven't calculated those costs. Are you, are you talking about our fundraising costs or anything we've done?
I, I was, so if someone is like willing to, I will plant all of the flowers, right?
Oh.
So if I plant all the flowers, it costs me $100 to plant the flowers. But if I am charging out to plant the flowers, it is $500 to plant the flowers, right? So is it, would that be calculated as a $100 or a $500?
So we haven't even gotten, we haven't even gotten to that point, because I think we need a plan, and if the plan is still in line with our, our efforts and our many hours of fundraising, that's definitely one of the things we would like to consider. We, there's a lot of rules, regulations, laws on the RFPs and everything, we can't, there's certain things we can't do yet unless, it's, there's a lot of work that needs to be done before we can see if something can happen along the in-kind.
And I would just say, from an accounting perspective, you would actually, whatever the company is going to write off for their contribution to this is what you would actually count as the dollars.
Okay, thank you. Doug?
Hi. Back in 2022, when, well, when you made presentation in front of town council, it seemed to me that you clarified the nature of the turf, that it was low PFAS and why it couldn't be guaranteed PFAS-free, and that it didn't contain crumb rubber. Right? Is that part of your fundraising? Do you communicate with your, with your donors that those are qualifications that are going to be put on the, the project?
Some of them have definitely, like, if you were at that meeting, I had the little turf and all the other stuff, I definitely have taken that to meetings, and one of our family donors really loved it, but that person also happens to run a company that creates the insoles that go in your shoes. So.
Jennifer?
Going back to Sarah Bass's question about in-kind donations, so you're saying you, the, the total that you gave, that you told us, 349,540, including committed, that doesn't include any in-kind donations?
Correct.
I have a vivid memory of you guys presenting to the school committee, I believe it was this past January, where you stated or certified that you had met the goal of 331,000, that it did include a chunk of in-kind donations from a landscaping company. Does that, is that now off the table?
He changed his mind, just decided he wanted to write a check. Yeah, you're, you're absolutely right, but he came back and would just prefer to write a check.
And just out of curiosity, was the check equivalent to whatever amount you had, you had earmarked or stated for that?
Yeah, I should say, the check is more than what we thought is in-kind would be.
Okay, thank you for clearing that up.
Thank you. Are there any other?
Sorry, I just wanted to say one other thing, just, I just wanted to correct something. You said something about the school committee, I didn't have, we didn't have a functioning school committee for a period, and I just want to say that the regional school committee has never had a, we didn't have a period of a non-functioning regional school committee.
The upheaval from May to September is what I'm talking about. We had to cancel our planning and events based on some of that upheaval.
Okay, you were, you were functioning.
I apologize for my wording.
Okay, thank you.
I thought you had to fill people in the Amherst School Committee.
But this is the regional school committee, and we didn't have that problem.
So part of our fundraising entails the town of Amherst, which has given the bulk of the funding. So part of that comes into play when talking, like, there's a lot of donors who want to know what the skin in the game is for the town.
Yeah, maybe if I could just give one quick example, there is a real estate developer that we have been having conversations with about donating to the track. This real estate developer wants to understand if the town of Amherst is truly committed to this project before they give money to it. In order to get that there, they want to see a strong statement from the town of Amherst, where that person has to go get planning approvals from, and the regional school committee, that it is going forward before he writes a check. I, I, that's just, that is the way he's running his business, and so we have put that conversation on hold, because there's been enough information in the press that leads this person to believe that not everybody's committed to this.
Are there any other fundraising questions?
So, quick question. So the 243,000 in cash for the 350, none of that's coming from the town of Amherst, that's all from?
That's just individuals, families, and businesses.
Sarah?
If the school, if this body said, we need that remaining, those remaining committed funds by March 1st, do you think you could get those?
You're talking about the difference between the 349 and the 2? By March 1st, probably not, because part of that includes the matching funds from Bank ESP, and I don't think I can get a big event planned in the next 29, 45 days. I mean, I'm good, but I'm not that good. But I think with a strong commitment from the regional school board and the towns, summer is easy.
Doug, when are we expecting the study that's currently done by SLR to be completed?
That's a great question. So the, the, part of it will depend, though, so I'll try not to be too vague here, this is that, there's a few aspects to the project, so they're gonna, you know, they're gonna start, they're gonna do some due diligence work as far as the, you know, the, the Tanbrook, which is culverted, condition of that, condition of the fields as they exist now, you know, that'll start right away, you know, the, the, the more clear we are with directive about what we're asking them to design, the, the more quickly they can do it. The, and we haven't had a kickoff meeting, so I'm not sure exactly the timeline, but around nine months was the timeframe for, for one of the, one of the proposals, I can't remember if it was SLR or the other one, so it's kind of in that timeframe, you know. It's likely, a lot of these kind of projects, because, you know, the construction season is what it is, you know, going to bid, basically December, January is the best time for the actual work, but you have to have, you know, sort of bidable documents, which means you have to have a specific design in place. You know, they'll, you know, the, the RP allowed for flexibility around, you know, the design to some extent, just because, you know, of the conversations we've been having, and so that, that also will make it more or less difficult or more time involved to, to get that done, if they need to develop sort of multiple trajectories of, of outcome. But it's also likely to be a circumstance where, you know, they may, we may give them a very clear directive, it's like, oh, we'd like this, and they sort of lay it out, and we're like, okay, well, that's more money than we really have. So what, you know, in, in the elementary school building project, they call it value engineering, which is basically kind of cost, right? So there's probably gonna be a value engineering cost conversation as, as part of this, too, so that'll be part of the work they do for us. But I think as far as just, you know, sort of, the arc of, of their expectations, probably about a nine-month window, or not much, much longer than that, but I'll, I'll know a lot more once we, we schedule a meeting with them.
Okay. Are we, are we also gonna get a, a separate track and field update where we can ask him, ask more questions about that portion of it, so that we don't have them sitting here at the table? We can, or is this all of the track and field discussion?
Well, I mean, the, you know.
This is for Sarah Bass.
Oh, we did have a little bit more besides the, the update from the boosters.
Oh, there's, do you want me to wait and ask it later, or should I ask it now?
Yes.
Okay.
Do we have any more questions regarding fundraising from our booster friends that have been here roughly forever? Sarah?
Just, I just want to make sure, it's, it's very clear, are you saying that if we take action to move forward with a project that is more vaguely defined, or at least does not specifically say "artificial turf," that you will not be able to continue fundraising? Or at least, well, go ahead.
I'll, I'll, I'll say, so the commitment agreements we have with large donors specifically say that language. We, we use the same language that is presently before you're operating under. So that is one hurdle, so we'd have to address. We convened, a lot of us are extremely exhausted and have other commitments and have to draw a line in the sand. So it's not because we, you know, this isn't, it didn't pan out, or whatever, it's more so the people power and energy and efforts of, of this project. So, so we, we had to just draw the line in the sand and say, you know, are we gonna finish what we started, or are we gonna start, like, new and pivot? We, we do want to, we're supporters of the athletics, we want to see a track and field, we want to see a track, personally, I'll speak for myself, I want to see this project happen, one way or the other, I committed to option three. But it doesn't mean I don't support that there needs to be a new project, but what, what it does mean is I'm not gonna spend an extra 40 hours a week to fundraise.
That's a follow-up. What does finishing the fundraise, finishing the fundraising mean if we do stick with option three? You want, said, we'll finish, we would finish the job, what is, could just collect this remaining money, or something else?
So having the event with Bank ESP, following up with some of the other leads that we have, continuing on fundraising, and since we saw that, you know, we have $350,000 and about a year's worth of real hard asks, and, but, but we haven't had many public events, okay? So we did one stage of fundraising, or actually, probably a couple stages of fundraising, in addition to just our learning, education piece of it. So we would like to do, what we would like to do are public events, publicized, having ESP behind us publicizing it, so a, a, someone who can pay for all that. I mean, that's in-kind in, in and of itself, having the place and the, the food and everything that's needed for that stuff. So in all honesty, I can't, we can't commit to funds, because we saw how hard this was, but we, what we can commit to, because we wanted to get some honesty, you know, from our volunteers who are still standing, what can you do for fundraising, so we can tell the regional school committee what to expect as, as far as funds? So we've had, had this year, and we, we have this number. What we can say is, like Stephanie said in the beginning, she and I at least are on until the end of this year. Chance, we'll see how it goes, but that's what we can commit to. I, I may still stay on after, but in any event, that's what we will publicly commit to, is that we will keep fundraising and doing our best until the end of this year.
Does that mean the school year, or 2024?
Well, I have the date in mind.
December 31st, 2024.
Yes, that's when our terms end.
Thank you.
I thank you so much for coming and presenting all this information and all of the hard work that you've done. I can't say thank you enough, so.
You're welcome. Thank you all for all your hard work. Thank you.
Point of order?
Yeah, I knew it.
It's been more than two and a half hours, and there's multiple hazardous weather conditions. I would like to get home safely. So I invoke the, whatever, the rule.
The policy? Okay.
Oh, sorry. Um, sorry, are we, I'm, I'm sorry, I got distracted for a second. Are we moving to extend the meeting?
I'm not.
No one has moved to extend the meeting.
No one has moved to extend the meeting. I move that we extend the meeting by 30 minutes.
I second.
Can I make a comment?
Yep.
So to sort of address Tillman's concern, would it be possible to skip to the warrant report and accepting gifts to expedite business? I also, there's other business that we've been putting off for forever. Anyway, there's a lot of business.
I know, I know it's mid-agenda item, but this feels like a reasonable place to break, if we, if we're not gonna finish tonight.
Anybody else?
And I'm not sure half an hour would be enough, frankly.
Anyone else care to speak? Anyone else care to speak to the extend by thirty-minute motion? Okay, no more. So, oh, are you back to, okay. No? Okay. Irv?
No.
Um, Tillman?
No.
Deb?
No.
Anna?
Yes.
William?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Bridgette?
Yes.
Sarah?
No.
Sarah and Sarah Bass, no. So we are not extending by thirty minutes. We will have to come back to the rest of our agenda items. And so we need a motion to adjourn. I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Okay, Irv?
Yes.
Uh, Tillman?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Anna?
No.
William?
No.
Jennifer?
No.
Bridgette?
No.
Sarah?
Yes.
And Sarah Bass, yes. We.